Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh one P M. They will call.
Mrs. Lala?
Here.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Here.
Mrs. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Carrigan?
Here.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Here.
Mrs. Deck? Mrs. Erba Arndt?
We have eight more. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance that is going to be read by the Lee School president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the American Constitution. And to the citizens of this country, the people, and the citizens of this country.
Amanda, can you read the mission statement?
Sure. The mission of Norwich School District eighty is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment.
Thank you. Celebrate the success.
Can I have my principals stand up and come on over here? So these were our Lee School principals for a day. And they helped to sell chocolate through the World's Best Chocolate Fundraiser for Norwich Schools Foundation. They each sold ten boxes or more of chocolate. So they had the honor of being our principals for a day. And let's go and introduce everyone. So I'm gonna start with Jacob. You wanna wave to everyone? Nathan? Turn around, give him one wave. You got Nico? Alright. And then Lala. Ally. Thomas. Gio. And Riley. And so as they were principals for a day, these are some of the things that we did that day. You remember our morning safety checks?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we had to make sure the building was secure. They've honored the job to make sure everyone's safe. We also, uh, part of that job is writing some notes of gratitude for our teachers and staff. You know, because we gotta make sure that we thank everyone for what they do for us day in and day out. Very important. What was this? You had lunch? And you didn't just have lunch anywhere, where did you get lunch?
In the teacher's room.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty special. Lunch for the... And it was for raising pigs too, so that was pretty cool. And we did some classroom observations, right? There's some pictures from a preschool classroom. We even saw a sibling there, right? That's pretty cool. So, you know, your hard work really pays off because with the funds that were raised from all of your hard work and from all the other students and parents, because they helped out you, Norwich Schools Foundation was able to purchase a guy-guy ball picture of Lee and Giles' school. So that's pretty cool. And there's an example of what they'll look like. Those aren't up and running yet, but they have actually just been delivered. So hopefully those will be put together soon. And we're excited about that. Uh, so we just wanted to say, uh, one last thank you to Norwich Schools Foundation for everything that they do to help out both of our schools here in Norwich School District eighty. Thank you to all of you. Nope, no, we're good. Because we're gonna have our board of education members come up right behind you to take a picture. All right, and our principals, if you can stay here for just a moment. Because we also have one more thing that you have to do. You have one last duty as a principal. And we want to say thank you to our Board of Education for serving all of our students and representing our community. So we have some things, Amanda, ask you to come to help me for a moment.
Our last principal duty is to thank our Board of Education. So, because November is our Board of Education Appreciation Month. So if you two can take that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Principals, can you say thank you to our Board of Education?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very important principal duty. Thank you very much. Families, you are certainly welcome to stay, but we understand you have other plans for the evening.
Do the principals have any, uh, further celebrating the success things to say?
And Giles, I'd like to thank our alumni Xavier Flores, class of twenty fifteen. He's currently stationed, uh, in Hawaii with the U.S. Navy. He came back to Giles' school. He has a career in the Navy of, uh, working, um, in the field of STEAM. So he came back and spoke to all of our eighth grade students regarding that career. And then he got to spend some time in our STEAM lab with our seventh and eighth graders with, uh, Mrs. Creppis. So it was a great time and we appreciate him coming and sharing his experience with us.
And what else? Consider motion to approve the agenda as presented. As presented. Madam motions?
Motion.
Amanda?
Bye.
Maria. Commander Ropel?
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes. The motion passes. Recognition of visitors. We have one, our client's gonna be known. Uh, course problem, do we have any course problem?
No, we do not.
Of the participation, like, uh... Uh, the FOIA request, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, they can be read as published. Uh, posted at the district website. They want to be, uh, reviewed. Uh, eleven presentation.
Thank you. So as I mentioned last month, um, the Illinois School Report Card for all school districts and all individual schools is published at the end of October. It opened up, um, on Halloween, on October thirty, I'm sorry, on the thirtieth, the day before Halloween. And, uh, so this month, we are, the information is on our vargot, so I'd like to speak to you about our Illinois School Report Card for Norwich School District eighty. So just to remind you of the ratings first, there are five different ratings that a school district of schools, individual schools can fall into. Exemplary, commendable, targeted support, comprehensive support, and intensive support. Really, only two of these ratings have to be there, will be there all the time. Because exemplary is the top ten percent of the schools in Illinois. So we are always gonna have exemplary schools because you're, no matter what the top ten percent looks like, there's always gonna be top ten percent. And then intensive support is always the bottom five percent. So no matter where everybody falls, you're always gonna have a bottom five percent. Even if the bottom five percent had very high scores, it's still the bottom five percent. And then everyone else kind of falls in between. Uh, the majority of the districts falling into commendable and targeted support. Really, the difference between commendable and exemplary only is that you're not part of the top five percent of schools. Because in the commendable area, you're not part of that top five, ten percent. And also you do not have any underperforming student groups, uh, below the all-student group of the lowest performing five percent of the schools. So then they split these out into different student groups. So it takes our E.L. students, um, to split them up into different ways. And not any of those groups are in the lowest five percent. Or if we were a high school district, that you must have a graduation rate higher than sixty-seven percent. That's not us. If you go into a targeted support or comprehensive support or an intensive support, then there is a improvement cycle that you would enter into, uh, with the state in order to improve your, um, your scores. Now, how they take this is they look into seventy-five percent of your points come from academic indicators and twenty-five percent of the points come from school quality and student success indicators. So in the academic indicators, you have your English language art growth and your math growth. Then you also have English language art proficiency and math proficiency, and then of course, science proficiency. I'm gonna go through the difference between growth and proficiency in a moment. And then you also have your English language learners. So these are your students that qualify, uh, for E.L. services, our English language services. So all six of those factors make up seventy-five percent of your total points towards your academic indicators, towards your indicators. Then you also add to that school quality and student success indicators. Chronic absenteeism, uh, ends up with twenty percent of that twenty-five percent, and then your climate survey. So every year, we put out the five essentials and we ask our families to please complete the five essentials. The five essentials, climate survey, uh, at this moment is just stating that people have done it. You have to have a certain threshold of families that have completed it in order to receive that five percent. That's really all that that does. So they came out this new little graphic this year for each of the schools. And this is Giles' couple graphic. So you can see on the side there, you have your math proficiency and your E.L.A. proficiency, which are at seven point five percent, make up seven, seven point five percent of the total score, each of them. Then your growth and your, um, E.L.A. growth and your math growth. As you can see, they make up twenty-five percent, a much larger percent. The orange area over there, I think it's just, uh, because of the graphic, but that's the E.L. part for Giles. That's the chronic absenteeism, which is the larger green area at eleven point two seven percent. And then the climate survey, which for some reason, again, they didn't show that amount for the climate survey, but we are at five percent there because we did meet the threshold, um, at Giles for the climate survey. So that, when you take into consideration all of those areas of points, Giles ends up with a seventy-three point one zero overall index score, which falls into the commendable area. That means that we don't have any low performing groups, so nobody in that low five percent. Um, yet we are not in the top ten percent of the state. Moving over to Lee. Uh, again, you'll see that E.L.A. proficiency, that math proficiency. And I'm gonna go a little deeper into both of those in a moment. Again, you see that, um, E.L.A. growth, that math growth, which are worth, uh, larger percents. This time, they didn't put the percent for E.L. Um, and in this case, with the E.L., the pink area, we're at four point two two percent out of five percent. So a little higher. The chronic absenteeism is at twelve point oh three. And then our climate survey isn't quite at five percent, it's four point eight eight. That's definitely the area we should always receive five, five percent of. We really need to encourage our families, work with our parent groups to, uh, make sure that parents fill out that survey. And again, it's just completing it. It's not a, um, goes up rating when people answer, it's just that people have completed it. So I'm gonna go through those two areas specifically, student growth. So the student growth percentile describes how much students grew compared to their academic peers who started at the same level. So these are students in the same grade, with the same subject, who had the same test score. So this could be E.L.A. for a fifth grade student and they scored the same as another fifth grade student in E.L.A. across the state. So when you look at that student growth number, that is comparing the same students to same, with same test to other students across the state. If you look at our student growth number at E.L.A., we were at fifty-seven percent. So that means that our students, um, I'm sorry, fifty-seven percentile, excuse me, a percentile's a little different than a percent. What that means is fifty-seven percent of our students did better than the, um, the other students in the state that took this assessment. The state average was at fifty. Um, so in this chart, you can see, uh, the blue is our district and then the orange is the state. Then we look to math, we were at forty-fifth percentile, the state was at fifty. And then in science, uh, we were at the fifty-third percentile and the state was at the fifty-second. Looking at student proficiency, and as you recall from the graph, uh, growth is the one that has the twenty-five, twenty-six percent that goes into the final score. And I'm sorry, I think I forgot to mention, Lee was at fifty-five point ninety-nine, also in the commendable area. But proficiency is part of, uh, it as well, and that's about seven or eight percent. So proficiency is whether or not the students have mastered a common high standard. So this is, yes, they know it, no, they don't. So this is not judging or not, um, measuring growth of the individual student compared to their peers. This is just, do you know it or don't you know it? Here, we were at fifty-three percent in E.L.A. The state average was thirty-five. We were twenty-nine percent in math. The state average was twenty-seven. And then we were right on par with the science fifty-two, uh, with the state. So we take a moment to look at our neighboring districts. One of the things that we definitely saw across the board in all districts, and I know this graphic isn't gonna show you this, but we saw a real decline in math everywhere in many of the districts, not just the ones around us, just a decline. And we definitely saw a decline. If you look back, back at our growth area, we were at forty-five percent in math compared to the state average of fifty percent. So I pulled up, uh, just some of our area districts, um, just to do neighborhood, neighboring comparisons. And that was on E.L.A., math, and science. I went through, as you can see at the bottom, there, um, there's, uh, Archford, which is the first in each of those areas. And then Canoyar, Union Ridge, District sixty-four, which is, um, Park Ridge, District eighty-one, which is Schiller Park, uh, District seventy-eight, which I'm trying to play gun at this moment. I'll get there in a second. And eighty-four point five, which is, uh, Rosemont. And then, uh, Fortine, which is Almond Park, and then two ninety-nine, which is Chicago. Thank you so much for that.
What'd you say it was?
Rosemont.
Rosemont Park.
So just looking at the colors on here, let's concentrate on the E.L.A. section for a moment. You, uh, will see the highest point there, uh, Union Ridge. And, um, then the second fifty-nine is from Park Ridge. At sixty-one and fifty-nine respectfully. And then moving down, you'll see District eighty at fifty-three. And then you start to see some, uh, trendings down where you have, um, Rosemont at the forty-one, Almond Park at thirty-five, Canoyar at thirty. Sorry, kinda went outboard in there. Schiller Park at thirty-two. And then, of course, uh, Chicago, the last group. Looking at math, we can get, we can see, uh, District sixty-four and Park Ridge scoring in that higher forty-nine. Uh, then we see just two of the thirties, uh, which is Union Ridge and, uh, Rosemont. And then we get down to the twenties, we were at the high twenty, twenty-nine, uh, twenty-four, twenty-one, um, to Canoyar and, um, Schiller. And then that continues. Looking at our science assessment, definitely have Rosemont at the seventy-seventh percentile there. Relatively high, Park Ridge, Canoyar, also coming out of that sixty-three area. Couple of other fifties then. We're right on, uh, with Schiller Park at fifty-three, fifty-nine, Union Ridge, and then a couple of fours. I think it's nice to look at what neighboring districts look like. Not that everything is the same, it's just because someone's down the street doesn't mean that we have the same educational experience or, um, funding. So I did go a step further from providing you with these results. I, I took this, so if you have not looked at the, uh, school report card, I definitely recommend because there are so many, I would be here for a very long time if I had to draw all the figures. So I did go through everything on these nine. But I did want to share with you the operating expenses per pupil. And there are two different ways that they put out the operational expenses. They talk about an instructional spending and that only includes the activities directly dealing with teaching of students or interaction between teachers and students. So how much do we spend to, to educate a student? So not all the other costs of operating the school district, but just how much do we spend educating students? And then is our overall spending, uh, is the operational spending. Now, the operational spending, as we move forward, can be affected by ESR dollars because many school districts have received a lot of money with ESR dollars and many of them have used a lot of that money. So when we look at operational spending, that, that could contribute to some of the operational spending we're looking at. Here is a look of District eighty since twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two. First, you can look at our instructional spending, we're, um, a little bit over ten thousand six hundred dollars, ten thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. I'm sorry, I just said that incorrectly. That is the state average, ten thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. District eighty spends seven thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars on their instructional spending. So that's the first student. Operational spending, eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-four thousand for District eighty. And then the average in the state is seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Moving forward, if we look into District seventy-nine, which is Canoyar, they are at eight thousand one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, which is nine hundred and sixty-one dollars per pupil more than what District eighty spends on, um, uh, our instructional spending. Um, and then on their operational spending, sixteen thousand, considerably higher than what District eighty was in their eleven thousand on their instructional spending. So that is what they, what they spend to run their district to, uh, improvements that they're doing, any kind of, uh, buildings and grounds things, any kind of site construction, everything that they have. Moving into District sixty, I'm sorry, eighty-six, Union Ridge, they are spending eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars per pupil on instructional spending, which is sixteen hundred and four dollars more than District eighty per student. And then they are, they're pretty close with us on their, um, operational spending of thirteen thousand, we were at eleven. So those are the two districts, very similar, although they're different tax bases, but very close, very similar to District eighty. I did put, um, Canoyar, I'm sorry, Park Ridge in here as well, District sixty-four, because they are very close to us. And we did just compare their scores. Park Ridge spends eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars on their instructional spending per pupil, which is four thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars, uh, more per student than District eighty. And nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five, uh, thousand dollars, um, per pupil on operational spending. Now, it does not mean that, um, you can correlate spending to test scores. That isn't always the case. Sometimes it's the case. In this case of these three particular districts, we see that, um, on our test scores, comparing us to Park Ridge, uh, they definitely have scored higher in, in all three of the areas. Comparing ourselves to Union Ridge, we see the same thing. But comparing ourselves to Canoyar, who is, um, nine hundred and sixty-one thou, a hundred dollars more, um, that isn't the case. So it isn't always the higher funds, um, mean that higher test score. But I think it is important to look at because if you're talking about a thousand dollars in addition per student and you're talking about twelve hundred students in the district, that makes that really, really different. Um, and that difference is in instructional spending, not operational spending. So that's just, that difference is in staff, additional teachers, additional interventionists, additional, um, people that can help to cut back the, uh, student to teacher ratio, to make that smaller.
So that's how it pretty much is calculated, it's the payroll scale divided by...
Correct.
By the students.
Correct. The instructional spending, yes. The operational spending can have some, some ESR running affected to it. Now, we have about eight hundred thousand dollars in ESR still waiting to be spent on our children. So that could affect our operational spending as well. We also have one building, you know, I'm sorry, two buildings. Some districts like sixty-four have multiple buildings, so obviously they have multiple staff spending. Canoyar, Union Ridge only have one building, um, so as far as upkeep of the building or heating and air conditioning, that all comes into effect as well.
Be interesting to see what, what these surrounding districts that you compare to, what, uh, teacher to student ratio per classroom is. You know, are they averaging, because what do we average now, twenty?
I think it's twenty, a little bit over twenty, twenty point two, something like that. Yeah, I did, I did not take that, although I could do that. I had information on it.
I'm just, I'm just more out of curiosity to see.
I agree with you. I think that would probably be a, a great next step to look at, to see. Definitely as far as instructing students, um, even looking at, you know, somebody who's closest to Canoyar, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars more, Park Ridge's four thousand dollars more. We think of four thousand dollars times one thousand two hundred students.
I guess a nice question would be in regards to, to, uh, comparison to Park Ridge and District eighty starting salary teachers, you know, because that can drive that up more. Um, that's why I'm more curious to see what the, uh, student per teacher ratio is.
I can provide that for you. It's, um, it's interesting because it really does depend on where your staff is as well. So you may also wanna look, we may also wanna look at, um, the, how veteran staff is. Because if you have a, um, a veteran staff, usually your salaries are a little higher, your average salary compared to some schools that have, you know, maybe you might have eight, ten people retire, you know, and then your staff is younger. And it does have that information as well, so I can, I can pull that as well. It tells you if you have a veteran staff or if you're staff. There's a, a lot of information.
And, and, and in regards to, um, our staff program, right, you know, what, four, four years ago, we kinda, we started, you know, everyone's in our school, right? Because that's the same department. Is that the same to Park Ridge or to New Year?
Sure. So New Year and Union Ridge and Park Ridge all belong to a co-op.
Okay.
They belong, Park Ridge and, I'm sorry. Union Ridge and New Year are still part of LASIK, which we pulled out of. They do both have, I actually just had a meeting with LASIK recently. They both have students that are still in therapeutic out placements. We have seven students still in therapeutic out placements as well. And then what they do when you're in a co-op is you run a special education self-contained classroom that may have students from all over the place. So, for example, New Year has an early childhood self-contained classroom. So they have kids from anybody that's in the LASIK co-op, not just New Year. So yes, we did pull out of our co-op. Seems like more than four years ago, but I think it was seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
Would your spend per student be more for if you were in the co-op versus, does that matter at all or no?
I don't think so. When you compare the money, if we pulled, if we looked at, because one of the reasons I met with LASIK was to look at, you know, are we, should we look at GOMEC? You know, what are the advantages, what are the disadvantages? I don't have that full report available for you yet, but I will, because it just happened. The question that comes into play is, you know, we employ our own psychologists, and we have full-time psychologists and a part-time psychologist at Giles. What level of psychologists would we be looking at? Last, when we were in LASIK, we had a psychologist one day a week. So do we, is that enough? Do we need to buy back more of a psychologist? Do we have our own psychologists? You know, we currently, right now, have three speech teachers. If we went back into a co-op, wouldn't we be looking at with the co-op speech teachers, our speech teachers? We have an OT and a PT that are, well, the OT's on staff with us, the PT we contract. You know, if they're saving from that as well. So there's a lot of things to be, to consider. New, New Year, for example, still does have a Director of Special Education, even though they are part of LASIK. They also have a full-time site, even though they're part of LASIK, so there's a lot of things to consider. And as special education, as I'm sure that I have shared with you really is, we are qualifying more and more students for special education services. We have more parents that are asking for amelations, and that's such as across the state. Twelve percent of our students are qualified for special education. Thirteen percent the average by industry.
On the slides with the overall index scores, there's two percent differences to each other. What is the one versus?
I'm sorry, which one do you want?
It is. After the five ratings, where it's overall, I'm done, it's I guess seventy-three.
Oh, it's ours, ours is the bigger number, and then how many possible? Another one?
Okay.
Yeah, so from how many possible?
Okay.
So, for example, our ELA proficiency, which you see was higher than our growth, that we got above our April before we went on the LEES line. I think that was seven point five.
So what do we need to get to, to get to that example rating?
So it's interesting, because it's a top ten percent in the states, there is a get to. Yeah, it's how everyone else does.
Does District eighty ever fall in that top ten?
Wait, last year Giles was a.
Prior to that?
Prior to that, not to my memory. No. Do you recall Mr. Beiki?
Not for the, I think last.
Last year, prior to election?
No, I think last year was the first year in this district that I can recall.
So a lack of bond, that's my third year in the district. So it's always a good record, so. So I shared that information with you, not as an excuse, because not in many ways an excuse, but I just think it's interesting information to share. So the question that comes into place, what are we doing about it? And last month, we had principals sharing school improvement plans. I have just given you some things that we have in place this year. As I know Mr. Beiki talked a lot about last month, we had a very busy summer, and we put a lot of new programs into place. We have a new reading curriculum starting in third and fourth grade. We're focusing on our math interventions in whole schools. We're continuing our professional learning communities. This year, we're focusing on our proficiency standards. So we went through last year, we identified all our priority standards. We pulled them all apart, and now we're saying, okay, what is it that a student needs to know in order to be proficient in this? We're also looking at our common formative assessments. That time, that is being done here at PLC time, which is sometimes happens in the morning collaboration meetings, but mostly in the after-school Wednesday early releases. We have some new parent universities that are started last night. Dr. Raviola and Mr. Beiki presented the MTSS plan to, at a parent university. We've had a very successful parent university earlier in October for our EL population. And we have a special education that's open for all parent university coming up on the twenty-eighth of November. And these are continuing throughout. We have new attendance and tardy tier approach. I did not focus when I was going through the slides on the chronic absenteeism. As you can see, looking at the LEES slide at twelve point oh three at TIE, and at Giles at eleven point two seven. So we knew that that was coming in high, so we put in a new plan where the assistant principals are checking in with families of, and we did have them present this to you a few months ago, of students that are either absent or often tardy. Obviously, if you're absent, you're missing all of instruction. If you're tardy, you're missing instruction, and you may not be ready for the day when you come in, because you've been running late being tardy. They make many calls to many parents through our communication tier approach to try to get everyone in school. Obviously, if you're sick, you're sick. But our approach is, we need to be in school now. I think during COVID, I think it felt it was, that school was not necessarily mandated to be in school, but now we're at the point where we need to be in school. And we can't, we cannot help students and meet their individual needs if they're not here. We have our MTSS committee that is working hard, re-looking at our MTSS approach. This is our multi-tiered systems of approach, the green and the orange and the, sorry, green and yellow and red triangles that we have shared with you a few times. We have data days where our teachers are getting together, looking at their math, their ELA and their SEB data, trying to do their individualized support that is happening inside the classroom. We started after-school supported Giles, we headed up late last year, where we started after-school supports at Giles. We changed the look of our ELL support with an increase on co-teaching. So at Giles, there's a little bit of pullout for students who are new to the country, but in general, the students, the ELL teachers pushing into the social studies class and co-teaching with social studies, working on vocabulary, and also working on comprehension topics. At LEES, there is also pushing in of the ELL teachers and then pulling out of some small groups as well. We're focusing our professional development on our school improvement plans. I should also say all of our finances. We are goal-setting, and finally, we are increasing our preschool program so that we can help to meet our families and our students needs younger, to be supporting them as they come through the school district. So we have a lot that's going on that we are focusing on, as you heard Dr. Raviola and Mr. Beiki speak about last month. A lot of different activities that are happening here in District eighty in order for our school improvement plans. They will come back and give you, after our next math and eye-ready assessment, they'll give you an update on where we are with winter to winter score, so looking back at last year's winter and this year's winter. And then, of course, all the improved from fall to winter. What questions do you have? That's it. I will gather that other information for you in a short, though, usual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrative reports. This is Guzzi.
Yes, let's see, just real quick, just wanted to let everyone know that Kimmy and I will be attending the triple I conference. Remember, this is the IESA, ISB, and ISBO conference on, this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We're looking forward to bringing you down there. We have some, some good plans. I think we're gonna have a good time down there. So we'll be attending that. Everything else is in my discussion. Before you begin, Mr. Masters is not here this evening. His report is in board book. And Mrs. Carnell is not here as well, but Dr. Raviola will share that.
Okay, those are monthly review. We'll have it in board book for special education. Mr. Masters, building reports, Giles, Mr. Beiki?
Again, I'd like to thank PTA. They purchased a freezer for us at Giles School. We recently had a book fair that was very successful, so we were excited about that. It was nice to see the kids excited. We haven't had a book fair at Giles in many, many years. So it was nice to have that, and we're working on planning the spring book fair currently. We, last week, we had an eighth-grade Washington DC meeting via Zoom with World Strides. Registration is currently ongoing for our eighth-grade students. Currently, we have a deadline of this Friday to register. I do understand that it sounds like it may be extended, so I don't know that what that extension date will be, but I understand it may be extended, according to World Strides. We had nineteen students submit an eighth-grade T-shirt design for the class of 2024, and the students voted, I should say, the eighth-grade students voted, and a design was selected. I will present the design next month at the board meeting. Again, PTA, they, I'd like to thank them for providing a meal to our staff last conference on November ninth. And we've scheduled the fifth and sixth grade winter dance on January nineteenth, and we've scheduled the seventh and eighth grade winter dance on January twenty-sixth. And that concludes my report, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you. LEES school, Dr. Raviola. So recently, Senator Brown, we had the scholastic book fair. Just want to say a thank you to PTA and for all the volunteers that make that happen. Because without all the volunteers, we know that that would not be a success. So we greatly appreciate you providing that opportunity for our students. With parent future conferences, we did have a procedure thing when parents were coming in, just to try to make sure we were having parents check in in a certain location and check out through the main entrance as well. We got a lot of positive feedback around, and that seemed to go pretty smoothly for the most part. And we also did have an incentive there, so students here were earning one hundred dollars if their parents were able to follow that procedure, so that was exciting too, because I know a lot of the kids were really excited to bring in those golden tickets to Palmer. We have begun hearing and vision screenings this past week. We are required to complete those by the Department of Health. And right now, at preschool, kindergarten, first, second, and third grades, we're on the hearing assessment, as well as students who may be receiving special education services, as well as preschool, kindergarten, and second grade that do the vision screening. And if there is a time where a student doesn't pass, typically they are retested, and then also a notification will go home for any follow-ups of that. We did have the, some students from Ridgewood High School come last Thursday to do some student experiments and demonstrations with our fourth graders, because that was really exciting. A lot of former students, because they were hoping to go visit some prior teachers and whatnot throughout that day, but weren't able to accommodate that request, but we were able to get them in here and working with our fourth graders, and they were really excited to see what the high schoolers are working on and things that they get to look forward to in the future. As Mrs. Guzzi mentioned, we have our second parent university in the school year MTSS night. We were really excited about sharing our multi-tiered system of supports for ELA, math, and social learning skills. And we have a, a reasonable parent advisory committee taking place on Thursday at four PM that I wanted to put out there too, because that's something where we're always looking for parents to attend that meeting, because their input is very valuable. We have definitely been trying to improve on our parent communication and inform them what it is that we do and how we do things in North School District eighty, so we want to make sure that we're getting our parents involved as much as we can. And that concludes my report. I did notice the invitation of the flyers, the Spanish, Ukrainian, and Polish, and I was talking with the Mustafa. So it's good to see you. Discipline reports, Giles, Mrs. Allen.
We had four suspensions, one in-school suspension in violation of board policy seven colon one ninety-nine, one in-school suspension in violation of board policy seven colon one ninety-nine and twenty-one, and two out-of-school suspensions in violation of board policy seven colon one ninety-four and twenty-one.
Was it just four suspensions?
This is different. That's why.
I know.
There were seven up here.
Yeah, there were seven up here.
That was last month.
Yeah, that was last.
Aren't you? Then we loaded the wrong one.
Sorry.
No, I don't think that was you. Unless it was seven.
September, September to October was seven, October to November has been four.
Okay. We'll fix that.
LEES, Mrs. Carnell's in here. I will report that out. So we had one out-of-school suspension in violation of board policy seven colon one ninety-nine. Monthly staff report.
It's attached to board book. I don't think there's much else to say. No second one has any questions.
Board committees, education, nothing new, we discuss it monthly. Board policy development, same day, discussing.
Policy, you have policy number two.
That's one of the things.
You can take that home and read that at your leisure. Next month, I will provide you a section-by-section report, and we will look at first rate.
Thank you. Building grounds, there was a meeting a couple weeks ago, and, well, a few weeks ago, and that you're going to address in your discussion on facility plan. That came from that. Behavioral intervention, nothing new, negotiations with human resources, nothing this month. Finance, we just had a meeting preceding this one. Communications, we'll do to discuss what that first step is. Can we do so? So for some months now, we've discussed why, at this point of the monthly meeting, I've said we need to discuss what we want to do. So we may as well use a little bit of this time to discuss what the board thinks communications could be. And naturally, the communications committee, for me, a fan, definitely, you know, you have specific ideas to bring up now. I know, you know, some of the ideas talked about was repeating something that happened some years ago, a few years ago. Basically, like having an open forum, inviting parents, and discussing some developments, and then having some Q and A. And keeping it looser than the normal monthly meeting where it's very formal, you have to sign up, because time is limited, but perhaps an open forum, like I just described. There was an idea of making video, because it's pretty exciting, some of the.
because it's pretty exciting, some of the, at least building grounds things that can be seen by parents where they don't have to kind of tour schools, they can see it in video. That could be really helpful. And maybe finding a way to address their questions and addressing it in video that they could watch at their leisure. So has anybody had any thoughts on what communications could be? Or talked to parents and discussed what they would like to hear or see?
I mean, not personally, but I think it's a, it's something that we should look into and get people set up. I mean, I'm a big advocate of having community members involved because you can't do everything and we're gonna need help to, you know, you can't rely on, it's unfair for just two board members to try to do everything on their own. I think we need help with the community because getting the word out, strength in numbers, I think. And maybe they can tell you some of their challenges of what, you know, they'd like to see. So, but yeah, I think we're so, human nature is we always want to hear everything that's going bad, right? We feel we have to tell everyone, but we have to get the community excited again. And let's talk about some good stuff because we got a lot going on that, you know, just get people excited a little bit more. My, my recommendation would be, I know we have community, communication members that, I mean, probably expired now, maybe they're not interested, maybe their kids don't even go here anymore. Reaching out and see if they're interested and then, you know, also reaching out to anyone else who's interested. But I think it's something that, you know, the two board members can facilitate, but as a whole, we can help as well. I think it's a, it's a key thing that we've really had a focus on in the last, you know, five years, really. But that's just my opinion.
I reached out a few months ago to all of the committees that had community members. I didn't have any of them that want to continue and some of them. We have a few. I think communication, I don't have any. We have some that stayed on buildings and grounds and some that didn't.
Gotcha, gotcha. So a fresh start.
In fact, some of our members are on board now.
So you're saying there'll be a fresh start, get people on board, which I think is.
You know, I think what's funny is each board member has their own little communications committee because they have a home and they get messages from the parents and they see other parents out and about with other kids at sporting events, local restaurant, and they hear, you really hear what their concerns are. And then we'll see each other, talk about these things, you know. But maybe an intentional open forum where it's, they can just ask what they want, hear about things that they're just simply not aware of. I don't know if that's something you want to, you both want to consider. Do you guys take the lead on it? I'll definitely participate. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think we have to start somewhere. And it's just, you know, reporting out every month, I cringe every time we come to the communications committee part. But I do agree, we need to just start somewhere and see what happens. See what it is that they do want here. To your point, there's a lot of good things that happen here and I don't think we talk about them enough and people just don't know, they just know the bad. So being able to share those examples and share that stuff is gonna go a lot more.
Great example is, is the maintenance and everyone who was working so hard over the summer. Of all the good things that are happening in the building, you know, cut the grass one week or we're behind a week and that's all, we're gonna stop going, right? So, so getting, you know, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we're doing. It'd be four and a half for pitchers, you know, even though, you know, we're all in the district. Maybe I'm a seventh grader and I don't know what we've done in the preschool, right? You know, and even though as a community should know that. I know this is wishful thinking, but like, it would be awesome if we had a parent on the communication board for each class, right? First grade parent, second grade, you know, and where we can all come together, right? And they can all, you know, say, all right, this is what our parents are talking about, what we're lacking or we don't know about. I mean, I know this is wishful thinking because getting people to get involved is always hard, but it would be pretty, pretty cool if we can get a parent from each grade level and so we, so we can know, I mean, that's. So real quick, obviously, social media is good these days. I know we have a Facebook page.
We do.
And is that, are we, you know, what's the protocol on that? Who runs that Facebook page? What are we posting? Can we tie in with communications? You know, is there something that, you know, we can do that maybe start growing on stuff on social media?
So John Joe runs it, but we have all of our, so like this board meeting will be out there tomorrow on our Facebook page with the link. We have all of the events that we do are out there as well as on our website, on our calendar. We have those two videos that we made at the beginning of the year and then the second ones that we created. Those are all out there. The second ones we created, the expectations of the pride system are out there as well. I mean, everything.
Even to do an Instagram story with the format of a real time, you know, like of all the updates we've done, for instance. That would have been cool to do, especially with that preschool area, you know, people that don't have kids in this building anymore or, you know. I always get questions, what's that dumpster doing outside? You know, but it's like, oh, you gotta come and see, you know. A whole news section of the school that you would never know, you know, existed before, so.
Yeah, you know what, I, a couple of time ago, I started, a lot has happened since. I'm not supposed to touch it, but basically, you know, a list of all the things that I've been, a lot of my building grounds, but some of them crisscrossed curriculum related because when you, when you completely rebuild and restart and set up a new media library, media room at Giles, it lends itself to curriculum, to hope their classroom can do new things better and have teaching lessons that we wouldn't have been able to. But anyway, create a long list that shows all the things that happened and it's gonna take a, just to, this has been so much, it's gonna take a little time to put it together. Start that behind the scenes and then maybe we think of a date. Holidays to throw a bunch of exactly right. But pick a date, publicize it in weekly tracks. And wish for the best, just hope that parents get motivated to come out and discuss their concerns. Any other ideas on how they would.
Maybe, you know, if we could put something in the weekly, something in the weekly tracks explaining what, what the communications mean, right? What, what members, what, you know, what are we looking for? What, what's, you know, what are the responsibilities for? What are the things they do so people can say, oh, yeah, you know, I'm interested, you know what I'm saying? Because I think there's a lot of people that say, yeah, I want to get involved, but really don't understand what it means to get involved, right? So maybe having a little paragraph on what the communications committee is, what we're looking for, what it does, it might spark some interest there, you know.
Could be maybe, maybe an initial big gathering or I hope, I hope it's a big gathering, but this is a forum. If they, if they come and it turns out to work well, that would almost work as its own recruiting tool.
Yeah.
You know.
Remember, when you open up a forum for people, they, they go a lot, a lot. You know, in many ways, so, but yeah, I mean, I think however we feel is the best, you know. If you guys, whatever you guys feel, I mean, is the best way, but yeah, we should, we should try to get as many people, but not overwhelming because we're gonna have different, but they get you guys' help and, and, you know.
I think it's, it is important to communicate what the goal is and what's not. You know, if it's, they have a particular concern and, you know, this is more than a forum than a communication setting.
Right.
Or communication.
I suppose it's somewhere to start from, to try that.
So I'll, Maria and I will connect and see if we can come up with a couple of different.
So I'm sorry, so our goal for this kind of first initial open meeting for people to come, or come to is going to address what we're looking for, discuss what the communication, or are we just, I mean, come talk to us about, you know, what are your concerns? What, you know what I'm saying? Like what is it? It's gonna be more or less, hey, come out and talk, you know, we're looking for communication members and come out.
Let us communicate some of the things that's happening that you may not know about.
Okay.
And maybe speak to us what you're concerned about.
Okay, so we're, so, so I'm not confused. There's two parts, right? One, we're gonna have this where it allows people just to openly talk about what their concerns are. But then on the flip side, we're, we're looking at how we build a communications team, right? Like we have the committee. So like, are we not, are we saying that we're not gonna do that anymore? We're just gonna have these once in, every couple of months forums? Or is our goal to build a committee? That's what I'm just asking, how do I, am I making sense here? I don't know if I'm.
It's a good question and I think, I think you can hope for that. I think historically, it's pretty hard to, in the past, you have a committee and they may stay out a year or two and then start to fall off because of kids who are on the border at school or the, the main concerns when they were here have kind of subsided and months passed and, you know, things are all right, I don't really need to go anymore. But I don't really know, I don't know if like really recruiting is, is something to, at least at first, maybe not traditionally pursue, just maybe, well, I know you guys are really, you guys take the lead, but maybe just inviting, let's talk. Do you want, you know, for those who you like, who like what happened tonight and want to get involved in a more, in, in, involved way with the board, you are welcome to come part of the meeting. But yeah, I don't know about recruiting from the get-go. They may, they probably want to see what this board will look like, get their voice there and see if they're even interested.
Yeah, my, my thing is, is that what I want to happen, and I might be the minority here, but Maria and you get together, but come with the group and say, this is what's going on. If you want to get it out there, how do we get it out there? You know what I'm saying? That's how I envision it because I respect everyone's opinion in regards to it, but it's when you open up the floor for, for, to, to express there, you're gonna hear from, and it could be a funny, you think, argument as well. If you give the floor for people to complain, no offense, because human nature, that's, you know, maybe you're, you're prone to just talk about the negatives or what bothers you personally.
Or very individual concern. That is a concern of theirs in their family, naturally, they shouldn't express it, but you could easily get caught up in thirty, forty.
I love you guys' rounds because the last time we did that, it was a long, as you said.
Hence why.
Right. The communication before I got on the board, it was, we were trying to come up with ways to communicate to the community better. And I think that's what it needs to be.
And there was a newsletter that never actually.
Correct.
It was developed.
I think that's what we need to do. Now, listen.
Yeah, I think you were talking about the intro, intro.
Yeah, I want to do a formally release.
Sound website.
Oh, was?
It was.
Oh, yeah.
Let me be clear because I don't want to make it seem like people's concerns are not important and that we're not gonna listen to them. I want to be clear with that, right? We, there's going to be issues where we need to get out where there was a miscommunication or something, or, you know, more. I'm thinking of like, hey, I never heard about this, but I didn't know this. That's the information we want to get out, right? And there's gonna be, and I think as a full board, we should consider a forum where people can come and express. I just think it's a little unfair for communications committee to have to listen to the grunk a little bit, right? So I'm, I'm all for a potential forum where us as board members sit in here, right? Because I just, you know what I'm saying?
I would plan to be there.
Right, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we have committees here, finance and so forth, and in North Park, and it's a little different. But communications is, how do we get the work up, you know, how do we, you know, get the community involved? What are they, you know, and it's also helping, right? Helping them say, all right, this is what we do. We want to do X, Y, and Z. All right, you three work on this, you two work on this, and we'll come together next meeting and we'll, you know, so that's just me, but.
I was gonna say, there needs to be some sort of structure. You can't just go in, you know, opening the floor and everybody. You need to have some sort of structure where you're gonna outline, you know, a few key topics and then just, you know, have some time where you listen to everybody else and hear about what they want to learn more about and that's your next meeting, you know? It's not gonna be something that we're gonna have, literally Maria and I aren't gonna have the answers to everything people are asking. So that kind of opens up the door to have the next meeting and be able to kind of follow up on those items from the prior meetings.
Yes.
And if I can suggest, maybe the first meeting is, is the two of you and with me and you plan out, what is your charge? What's your role for the rest of the year? And you, where do you want to be in June? And then we would kind of backwards design how you want that to look like. You first would say what you want, what do you want communications to be? And then you can plan from there. If you want to eventually do an open forum or, or a forum that's limited to topics, then at least you can plan that. But if you start the first one that way, you think that you're not gonna put yourself in a, in a place of success. At least have a plan first. And of course, anyone else can join, we just have to post it as a, if they're more than two. Let me know. You two talk about dating, you can go on.
Let's not forget that.
If that's something you don't want me to do, please, whatever.
Parents with a concern, they're getting, they're talking to. So it was not gonna take a big meeting for them to, but yeah.
I, I was not at that last communication meeting, but I got the notes that Mr. Beattie took so nicely and it was, you should do things this way, you know, you should do things this way, you should do this way, and you should do this. It really wasn't productive though. I don't think we learned anything from it that way, that we're actually.
Pretty good to, I mean, just to understand prior, I mean, I've been on the board half very long, but where are some things prior that was maybe helpful or what the communications committee did in the past that might be, ah, it was, you know, it really was helpful, but parents like, you know, something that give you a starting point and say, maybe let's go back to that, you know, or I don't know.
Looking around at some other districts, it looks like they do like a communications newsletter. And that kind of outline, you know, what is the function of the school board, what is, not the function of the school board and, you know, there are some exciting things happening. But I know that Mrs. Guzek puts out a newsletter to us sometimes that's very similar in content as device. Blessings, so. I think that's a great.
And with the email, steam, just like, you know, get weekly tracks, it'd be easily done.
And we have found that even short little videos, you know, we have a short video of, hey, this, I'm standing in the new space and this is what it looks like. It could be thirty seconds long. This could be very good.
Okay, well, yeah, that first fact, I think. Okay, moving on to the Norwich Park district. Nothing new. Discussion items.
Yeah, I will just mention that in the sign. Yeah, I will, uh, just mention that in the sign folder tonight is the Norwich Park District contract. Signed by the Norwich Park District and now signed by you and Maria. Okay, I have, uh, six different main areas to speak about tonight in my, uh, discussion report. To begin with, November is in our belief theme, uh, believe in families, communication and collaboration. We chose these three areas together, because they kind of go together, we're working with families, we need to make sure we're communicating, which is why we should talk about communication. And that we're working collaboratively. Uh, so we have begun that, we, of course, had parent-teacher conferences in November, as Dr. Raviola spoke about earlier, we had great turnout at both schools. And, uh, really excited to be able to meet with parents and share all the wonderful things that is going on with their children. We did have a, uh, buildings and grounds meeting back on October twenty-third, um, where we went through a, a couple of different areas. We updated, um, everyone on our projects, a couple of things that I wanted to highlight for you today, and this facility's plan is in the consent agenda tonight for approval. Are some of our completed projects, we were very excited to complete the plumbing, the RPCs and water heaters are kind of got thrown into this project, the, the kind of mid-project. We realized that a water heater is also needed to be replaced. But this project came in at, um, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which is a great number. When STR did an estimate of the plumbing project, so this is all of the copper pipes in the halls, so not leading into the classrooms, into the bathrooms, but into the halls, so the changeover of all the galvanized pipe into copper. We now have hot rooms and hot water rooms, we never had hot water in the room. We also have clear water keep running out of our pipes, which is critical, as you know, over time, that's just what happens to galvanized pipe. Uh, water runs quicker and, uh, more efficient. So, uh, when STR first, our, our architect firm made an estimate of how much this was going to cost, it was a little bit on the early down. So we completed this at three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and that really is directly because we did a, um, a project where Derek over, was overseeing it, kind of being the general contractor. The company, Green Tech, came in at night and did all of the work, and we were able to get that done during the school year, and get it done at really just an amazing price. We're so excited that we can check that off. Now, of course, we don't have done, except for the kindergarten rooms, the plumbing into kindergarten rooms. In fourth grade, when we did the fourth grade classrooms this year, we actually removed the sinks in those areas. So as we move down further at Lee, going to first grade, second grade, third grade, we are retaining those sinks, so we'll be looking at some plumbing in the walls, uh, which I actually have on this project, but just wanted to, um, share that with you. We, um, did a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar preschool area, which we were just talking about. Pretty much completed a couple of little things that hap, that happened down in the preschool area, but we're very excited and happy about that. Our one oh two, um, kindergarten, fourth grade and cafeteria came in at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Again, just really great prices, and I have to re-thank our buildings and grounds, uh, group, because they are able to keep these costs down. Uh, one, because we can do a lot of the work ourselves, and two, we're general contracting ourselves, so we're able to, of course, go to bed, and one needs to go to bed, uh, legally, but then being able to oversee everything ourselves, where we don't have to have a middleman taking care of things. And our, um, buildings and grounds group have a lot of skills, so they're able to do a lot of the work themselves. Our final, our fire panel systems have been changed over, approximately two hundred thousand dollars. About eighty thousand dollars in miscellaneous, and I know that seems like a lot of money, but money adds up quickly in your destruction projects, those miscellaneous things. And we did about eleven thousand dollars of asbestos. I like to say asbestos is over, but asbestos is really never over. Um, as we go into the classrooms, um, when we continue next year, I'm sure we will continue, but we always, uh, make sure that we mitigate asbestos correctly and take every precaution. Our current projects that we're looking at right now, we're gonna continue our classroom redo, so as you know, kindergarten and fourth grade. Uh, we're starting to do a study of first, second, and third grade, to go around the corner here at Lee. So paint, furniture, really updating the look of those classrooms. Uh, we're looking at, uh, a locking system where we would be able to have the fob locks on all of our classroom doors and our hallway doors. And our goal there is really to be able to lock everything down, uh, by, with a push of a button, so Miss, Mrs. Peters, who works on our locks now, currently has to walk kind of door to door and update every lock with a, with a computer, but we're, um, looking and getting to the point where we can just shut everything down from a central location. Where, uh, tonight, we have on the board agenda the approval of the administration area with the lunch ventilation, so during COVID, we realized when we, we did the lunchroom downstairs at Lee, uh, when we took down the ceiling, there's not ventilation in the ceiling. So that is something that we need to keep up with, especially when we have children here. Uh, so the area right above is the old preschool rooms, one oh one and one oh three, we're looking at basically, um, which is on rule for tonight, uh, putting up some new offices, drywall breaking through a while, and then putting in new ventilation downstairs into the lunchroom, which will also cool the lunchroom. Right now, there is not cooling in the lunchroom. Uh, bring in a lot of air movement, which is definitely. And of course, the chillers project, we, we have a date, I believe it's March fourteenth, March seventeenth, somewhere around there, that the new chillers, we have two chillers coming here at Lee, and one chiller at Giles, um, and that will probably take us through the remainder of the S R plans, along with that ventilation project, um, for the lunchroom will also be, uh, through S R. We're also looking for, um, a playground area that is appropriate for our two to four-year-olds, a project we're working on. At Giles, we are looking at the brick rental area, that is, um, that area where, that, that structurally, I would have an issue, but there is some limestone underneath that is starting to erode, so we need to fix that, structurally, the, the building is fine, it's just we need to fix the limestone. We're addressing the wood ceiling, that is in the fifth, sixth grade hallway over at Giles, and then also continuing some plumbing at Giles as well. Please, yeah, jump in.
The wood ceiling, uh, that is the whole length of the fifth grade wing, was a focal point of the tenured life safety study. Uh, what was it, three years ago, two years?
Correct, three years ago.
Uh, as well as earlier mentioned, the RPC valves and all the plumbing. So we made huge, huge strides in our tenured life safety study.
The wood ceiling is, it's, it's an extended A, but it's our last of our A's. Uh, we are looking at, um, so if you're here at Lee School, across from the Lee office, when you're going down towards the nurse's office, putting in or moving that set of doors that currently is after the nurse's office to before the nurse's office. This will allow us to turn those doors around, so that you can't get into that home, which will close off completely Lee School on any of our rental events or any, um, of our evening events, since our new ADA bathrooms are up and running as well, which are beautiful. Uh, we have a generator on order, we actually ordered last fall, we're still waiting for. We are looking at the east floor tile here at Lee, this is the area, if you recall, that would flood often before we put in the drains a few years ago, when we dug up into the courtyard. Uh, we've had a lot of damage to that tile, that we have replaced and replaced, and now it's a point where it's a little bit more of a hard touch area, so we're looking at bringing in, um, a new floor in that area. Um, I always leave on current projects miscellaneous asbestos that might come up along the way, and again, we mitigate that properly. On our future plans, that's all the current things we're looking at, any questions? Things that we have for future, that we are hoping for in the future, um, yeah, we have actually in our title foreground this year, uh, which is for well-rounded education, we have, uh, the purchase of some robotics materials. So about ten thousand dollars in robotics that we're looking at adding up to the lead curriculum. We are looking at the electric panels in both schools, this is an area that is also coming up in the life safety. Um, we're looking at additional funds for classroom furniture, as I mentioned already, looking at continuing floors, and then really hoping to, um, improve our outdoor spaces. As, uh, Dr. Raviola mentioned earlier, NSF has, is providing us with this gaga wall, um, pits, and we're just hoping to be able to provide more opportunities for our students on our outdoor spaces, either through support from NSF or other organizations, um, or just, um, in our own district funds.
Did somebody request the gaga pits?
The school student.
Okay.
So what, what did you say again?
Sure, you wanna speak about that?
What is, what is the gaga ball pit?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I saw the picture, but it, it looks like a trampoline from probably.
No, it's, so, it's, um, it's kind of like, uh, it's a pit, you have about fifteen or so kids that can go in at one time, and it's kind of like, uh, dodgeball, except the ball stays on the ground and you kind of smack it with your hand, and then if it hits you out, then it can't.
So it's, it's an area.
It just provides like a structured game that they could actually play outside.
And, and obviously, it's a, it's played outside, but, I mean, I don't know, is this, like, do you have to winterize it, bring it in, take it out in the winter time?
Yeah, great question.
Is it something that we.
Yeah, so it's actually, uh, constructed with a composite material, again, similar to like a, a deck would be, um, so it, it's okay to be up year-round. Um, they do have one at, uh, Union Ridge, I know when we were over there one day, we saw that there, and, you know, that kind of sparks an interest, and we know, um, our students play gaga ball in, uh, PE sometimes, you know, depending on, you know, if they're in that particular unit, so, um, we thought it'd be nice to have some kind of structured activity outside at recess, because, you know, with, uh, without having some kind of structured activity, it can be a challenging time with lots of things going on all over the place, and, and, uh, we, we're always getting asked for, oh, can we get some more like recess equipment and things like that? And then that equipment can go missing pretty quickly, or balls on the roof, or things like that, so we thought this might be a, a nice way to provide something that, you know, also has some, you know, some rules that go along with it, but can be fun.
Good luck to the person who managed the fifteen in and fifteen out, and you lost the head one.
The lead principals were here today, uh, seemed to know what they were, because as soon as the pictures came out.
Kids are very excited about it.
And where are you guys placing them?
So we're, we're looking at where the, the final placement will be, because I know we're, uh, talking about a few other, uh, potential projects, so, still scoping out where, where they would go, but one of the great things about these gaga ball pits is that the ones that we ordered come with a, a quick connect pit, so they can be moved, once they're, uh, installed, they will come apart in sections, so it's not like, it's there, it can never be. Sure, there's still some labor involved in that, but, but it, it won't necessarily be mounted to a specific spot, have to live there forever.
Is it, is it okay to ask for the value of these arms, or would they?
Absolutely.
Sure.
That's right.
And it has to be rough, it doesn't have to be a dick, like, are you talking thousands, ten?
Oh, yeah, I think we're probably around seven thousand dollars.
For each, or for?
For both of them.
Okay.
About thirty-five, I think.
Sure, so.
Yeah.
And so, and tonight, in consent agenda is accepting the donations. From NSF. So as you can see, we still have, uh, a lot of plans moving forward with the facilities, um, and hoping to accept that facility plan tonight. Do you have any questions?
The, the only thing I would have to say is, is I know there's a lock and anonymous ring, at some point, if we can have a discussion of the buildings and grounds and all that about that lead, that field, like, where it was a softball field, and it's, everyone drives down the lines, they see it, it doesn't look great, I mean, have a future plan for it, either we're gonna do something or not, because it doesn't look good, and when people drive the height, and it's unfortunate, it's what they see.
You're talking specifically about the baseball diamond, or just the green space?
Well, just in general, where the diamond used to be, and now there's weeds all over, and it just, you have a backstop still up there, and it just looks like, you know.
I didn't know if you meant the, the field, like.
No, no, no.
It was the green space.
Yeah, I know, the specific area there, which is, just start the brainstorming process of like, what can we do most cost efficiently, make it good, and make it something.
Yeah, we definitely need, uh, someone for that.
I think this is, doesn't have, you know, something just.
No, but we should, we have a tenured plan, which never matters. Okay, moving on to our next item then, uh, we have an update on a few grants. So we did hear back from the state on the preschool for all grant, we are through for a hundred students. We are receiving an additional two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on the grant this year, uh, which is great. Um, we have added another screening, because this month of November, the preschool teachers don't have a screening, typically they have a monthly screening. This month, however, they did home visits on the day that they typically do screening. Part of, uh, you must do for the grant is to go out and visit families, they went out to about, I think it was like fifteen for each of them families last, last Friday, to visit the students at home, provide what, uh, whatever services that, you know, families might need, talk to them about their home situation. So we've added another screening, November twenty-ninth, um, tuition will be refunded for tuition-paying families who wrote to the PFA grant, currently, right now, we have thirty-four families that are all secured into the grant, because that's what we have, thirty-four seats. Now with the additional sixty-six seats, we're going through our waitlist, so really important families, you must go through a screening in order to qualify for this grant. Um, so even if we have people in our current program that are paying tuition, if they have not been screened, they do not qualify for the grant. You must, must, must be screened, you must turn in income information. I know not everybody loves that, but you have to do that for the grant.
So, you're, you're, okay, are you saying that to us?
I'm saying that to the people who are watching.
Is there any way you can get that message out, because?
I mean, we have, we have fly eye drop.
I don't know, like.
We have fly eye drop everywhere, we've sent out, we've sent out the flash to the entire community, the Norwich Park District has it on their website, and, uh, the, the Howard Heights has it, Pennoir even, um, is, uh, advertising it, Union Ridge is advertising it, um, we have it all over, we do have quite a few families coming in the twenty-ninth, and we've been, uh, communicating with our existing families come in for a screen.
So you said income?
Income is required, yes.
Because it's the grant, so they have, there's a, the.
They have to provide us with income, I don't care how much people make, I'm not looking at income, I need to check off a box that you turned in your income.
Oh, okay.
I always appreciate.
I was just gonna ask, because like, Union Ridge, I know who's never really asked for an income, over there?
PFA requires income, if I have an audit on PFA, they will require to see that income, and I am not really willing to not have that.
So, but if a child needs help, let's say, parents' income is higher, are we saying they wouldn't qualify?
I think it's a pre-system, right?
No, 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 income is just one piece of something, it, you can, you can have a, a very high income and still qualify for this grant, it's just one piece of it. It's just, I mention it because it's very, people don't want to get involved in, because they feel like, oh, I'm not gonna qualify, or I'm not gonna be part of that, but it's just one piece. So it just, it's a box we need to check off, and then we move on to everything else. And with a hundred seats, it is very likely that, uh, people that are currently in our program will get into the grant. We don't have a hundred kids on, or sixty-six kids on the waitlist.
Alright, so right now, you have thirty-four who are, are the grant, right? Then you have, how many get paid for tuition?
So we have, uh, sixty-two kids currently in our program, so twenty-eight.
Okay, so, then you said you have a, a, a waitlist that is?
Uh, I think it's got about thirty families on it.
So let me ask you a question. After it's all said and done, we get to eighty-five spots.
Okay.
Now, obviously, you're not gonna get, you're gonna get based off of eighty-five students, right? I'm assuming, right, the grant is gonna cover.
So will the dollar amount we receive be based on eighty-five students?
No, you're getting two sixty-five, we're just saying.
No, it's based on how many students that were given, yeah.
So now, we have eighty-five this year, could that, could we boost spots next year, knowing that we fell short of the hundred?
Yeah, great question, yeah.
Is it?
So, we're really gonna wanna fill that, but less than maybe ten percent would be the most that we're not gonna fill, so we need to have nine new kids. They're not gonna, this grant that we have right now is good for this year and next year, that we reapply. So, uh, PFA is always three years, last year we had PFA, just the beginning part that allowed us to plan, we bought furniture, things like that. Next year, uh, this year then, we're running it with that total amount. Next year, this year then, we're running it with that total amount of three eighty-eight, which is our total amount for the grant now. And if we don't end up filling the hundred seats, they don't take that away. Next year, we still start with the three eighty-eight, and then we reapply. And that's when the state could say.
You average X amount for the next.
The governor couldn't cut that budget, there are lots of things. We can now be in compliance with something. This is a grant you have to be in compliance with, or they take money away.
How many people on the waiting list have this, come where you would have to hire another teacher? Right, we're going to have to, right, bring, to get a hundred, we're going to have to have.
Yes, we'll have to add another teacher. How many until we have that other teacher?
So how many do we have room to say, hey, our staff can handle X amount of issues?
So if we, if we look at, PFA wants you to have twenty children, so that would be eighty. And we're at, what did I just say, sixty-three, sixty-four? So what is it, sixteen? We're, we're definitely looking at adding another student, another teacher.
Okay.
Our next step then is to advertise those additional seats, which we have flyers out there, hire another preschool teacher and another parent professional, contact our waitlist families, which we're trying to do next week. The thing we have to, you know, we don't want to put the parrot before the horse on, I want to contact those families on the waitlist and let them know that I need to find a teacher. And we'll be looking at a January eighth start. So Dr. Raviola has some interviews that have started. We need to find a teacher. If I don't have a teacher, then I can't, I can't bring that.
And then, sorry, I just wanted to hear, is that if anyone who has done a screening already.
Correct.
And did get the grant, they're paying tuition.
Correct.
Their screening is on file, you'll just contact them. And within that screening, they have to do their, their stuff, as long as they did a screening.
Yeah, our screenings that we've done so far are good.
Yeah, okay.
I did ask our PFA consultants, should we be going out to Union Ridge and Penoiar and pulling our kids back? They do not want us to do that. They feel that the students have already formed relationships and are in comfortable places, and they wouldn't want us to do that. Now, if a family decides to do that, that's up to them.
Okay.
It's a very exciting time for us. A couple of things I wanted to mention about the Community PBIS Grants, is we continue to build our PBIS tiered systems of support. We are starting support groups right after Thanksgiving break. NAMI, the National Online Mental Health, is going to be running with us at five o'clock at Lee and at six thirty at Giles. And that is in the traps, we've been advertising this, and the principals and assistant principals have been speaking with parents about this as well. These are support groups for families that need some support with either mental health or just discipline, talking with children in general. So this is really a wonderful support for our families. That is, it's starting the twenty-seventh of November. I also wanted to share with you a couple of things from a parent survey, and I shared the full parent surveys with you. Obviously, the red are the Lee surveys, the Giles are the purple surveys. So at your leisure, you can take a look at those. I actually think they're really interesting. This was run by NAMI, and the questions were written through a PBIS protocol that puts together questions for a mental health survey to our families. We'll repeat the survey in January, May. So a couple of areas that I want to highlight to you on the survey. And I here give you the Giles data and the Lee data on the same slide. So keep in mind, this was done in September. One of the questions was, are Giles, are staff at Giles respectful to you? And you can see the yes, the sometimes, and the no areas of the questions that are off to the side. Yes being blue, somewhat being red, and no being a yellow color. This actually might be great information for you to the Communication Committee, because there could be some areas here that are highlighted that you might want to speak about. As you can see, overwhelming Giles, ninety percent, Lee, ninety-six percent, feel that the staff is respectful to the families. The next question was, if your child has a problem, is there someone at Giles you would like to talk to? Similar question at Lee. Giles came in at eighty-three point seven percent yes, that they know who to talk to. Lee came in at ninety-three point four percent that they know who to talk to. While those are high numbers, it still really concerns us that people answer no to those. So I think that's definitely an area we need to help communicate with families on. If they need some kind of support, who can they reach out to that can help them? Definitely those Monday night meetings at NAMI is something they can reach out to, but even just everyday support. Very often, the principals or assistant principals don't care about something until it bubbles up so big that the parent is like, this happens all the time, all the time. You know, we should hear about it the first time it happens, not waiting till it's happened many times. The next question was, are our staff clear about how they expect your child to behave at Giles and unfortunately? We did have a small percentage here, two percent, and the Giles side that said no. Other than that, we had some pretty strong numbers, ninety-two percent and ninety-six percent in yes. The next question that went a little bit further into that same area was, do you think Giles' discipline systems are fair to your child? Again, we had a yes of seventy-two point nine percent at Giles. We had a, both schools had large areas of somewhat. And while I know that isn't detailed, if it's still just something we need to focus on and move into further. And then we had pretty similar areas of no, eight point three percent, eight point six percent of no. Has someone from the school contacted you to tell you about your child's positive behaviors this year? This is one that I included, because I want to see if there's any growth in this. Because we had very strong eighty-four percent, eighty point three percent in no. And really, we should be communicating positive behaviors, just as we talked about earlier at Communication Committee. Everything shouldn't be negative. The first time you hear from us, the first time you talk to us shouldn't all be negative, it should be positive things as well. So this is one I will particularly be looking at and see how it changes in January. The next two I coupled together, if you felt your child was facing mental health challenges, would you feel comfortable seeking mental health help for him or her? Very strong numbers in the high eighties, eighty-seven percent, eighty-nine percent in yes, and then a small amount in somewhat and no. And then, do you feel knowledgeable about mental health resources in Norwich and the surrounding areas? Very large percents of no. So this is the kind of reason, this is the reason we're doing the NAMI support groups on Monday nights, because they really can help support families. And if it's, it's something they can't handle there, then they have other resources outside of it. It's very difficult to get mental health support right now for families, which is difficult to get appointments. So this will be something that we are able to provide. As you can see, of the data that we have, high eighties percent of people would feel comfortable seeking help. So if they're comfortable seeking help, we should help them to find it if they need it. This is a very small snippet of the survey, as you can see. But if you spend some time taking a look at it, and I think you would agree, it's very, very interesting data. And then I'll have it again in January and at the end of the year.
I think it's a very interesting.
Some of the comments are very interesting. I didn't include any comments.
Sorry, I didn't use it.
There's comments also? So I didn't include any comments on my presentation, but you have other comments. And many, many of the comments are very positive. As areas for. Excuse me?
This was, this was just, we got this at the day of the.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was going to say, this is.
It's in my presentation and workbook, but then you have it on paper.
Oh, I got you.
The Giles Infrastructure Grant was the last grant I wanted to mention. I do have this as an action item today, because we are finalizing this grant. And I wanted to share with the board what we're looking at putting into it. So we're looking, this is only for Giles. We're looking at moving the electric panels, which is approximately fifty thousand dollars into the infrastructure grant. The alarm locks that I mentioned earlier, that would be able to lock down a building that qualifies as infrastructure. That limestone lintel that I mentioned to you before in the south, southwest, I think, the southeast area of the building. And then the generator. So that would equal out to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So if the board approves that and we go forward, I go, we have parents in on a reserved time on Monday to finalize that grant, and then we'll be able to move forward. This is a grant that once is approved, we find and then we're reversed. Just wanted to share with you on my area of legislative update, that Illinois is currently working on a comprehensive literature plan, literacy plan. This would be a plan that all districts will be needed to follow for literacy. With Illinois is finding that literacy across the state is very different. So they would like to unify the literacy efforts and put together a developmentally appropriate evidence-based literacy education program. I've not seen this yet, although there are some different models I'm looking towards going down throughout the state, but I'm not, not like something I've experienced. They state there are three goals, that every student receives high-quality evidence-based literacy instruction, every educator is prepared and continuously supported to deliver high-quality literacy-based instruction, and that every leader is equipped to create, maintain, and sustain equitable conditions of high-quality evidence-based literacy instruction. So just an area I wanted to make you aware of, I'm sure you'll be hearing more of this from the state. We're probably looking at a July one start, unless something pushes that back. The legislative sessions have ended right now. We have a lot of other movement down hills that are out there. So not much to report about the new bills that we've talked a little bit about already. We'll have to see when they pick back up and see what happens in the industry. Just to follow up, as Mr. Viaki mentioned earlier, we did have an informational session for the eighth grade Washington DC field trip. We are looking at the trip on May twentieth through May twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. The informational session was on November eighth. The cost of the trip is sixteen thousand and, no, sorry, sixteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars per student. The adult price is slightly larger, because per student, they put the students in, the four students in a room in a hotel, adults they only put two. So nineteen fifty-four is the total per adult. There were sixty-one attendees at the virtual meeting that Mr. Viaki and I also attended. As of today, I believe there are eight people that have put down their deposit, deposited ninety-nine dollars. Also, as Mr. Viaki mentioned, that deposit is due on November seventeenth, although like, have mentioned possibly moving that date. The trip then would need to be paid until the line March sixth. So I'll have some more information for you on this trip as we move into December. The seventh grade field trip, we have a date of May thirteenth, that's the Springfield trip. That trip has stayed at one seventy-five per student. That is taking those coach buses down to Springfield. Those are those nice big coach buses, comfortable, bathroom on the bus. They're looking at leaving them in the, early in the morning and returning around eight PM. Maybe a little bit earlier than that. All meals, transportation, and we're just getting to the point of sharing all of the families. Future, we're just looking forward to the truth and taxation hearing at the December VOE meeting, and then, of course, the level. And that is my.
Consent agenda. So well, I normally have a discussion, asking for discussion after asking for the motions. Because we will have a motion for fifteen A through G. Is there any discussion to follow? Any of the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda fifteen A through fifteen G?
Motion.
Maria.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Baraghi?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
And Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. Sixteen action items. Sixteen A, consider approval of resolution for loans and working cash fund to bond. To bond an interest fund to the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Amanda, Renzo. I have a roll call.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Uh, Renzo.
Thank you.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mr. Baraghi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mrs. Banning?
Theodore.
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. Sixteen, uh, consider approval of bid package for administration aircraft at Lee School. Can I get a motion? Maria. And I have a roll call.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Baraghi?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. Action A and C, consider approval of Giles Infrastructure Grant application. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Renzo.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a roll call.
Mr. Baraghi?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yeah.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. Board comments. This is another opportunity to discuss things amongst ourselves and public. And I would like to take this opportunity to discuss ideas on, um, the Giles and the need, if so, for hassle, what it entails, what you think of it. Does anybody like to bring that? We all know, this event that brought attention to this. We, you know, months prior, talked about possible costs and so, what that cost could potentially be. We do know that it is a new cost, and new cost means the money you put into that is also taken away elsewhere. Unless you're into, you're ever. But that's, that's challenging, this is just. So, anybody have any thoughts on?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we should revisit and do the homework to understand, not only on the financial side, because obviously, it's a touchy subject, because there's no price tag, right? It's something that we're looking, we should really investigate, see what it entails. You know, what does it mean? What are some, what are they doing? What are some things, the positive things that they bring to it? You know, Ridgewood obviously has one, you know, what are they doing every day? I think people feel like they're just marching down the hallways, right? You know, there's other things that, door checks, perimeter checks, you know, there's things throughout the day. I think we should revisit with, I believe the best approach was with Police Chief of Norwich, right?
Yes, Chief Glass.
Yeah, and I think you should have another meeting with them.
Okay.
Understand, you know, how that works, what they do throughout the day, what is, you know, obviously benefits, what are the potential comments, right? There's pros and cons, what could be potential cons? And we should definitely look at it. Unfortunately, we're world today, and I think we should.
Would you like me to advise them tomorrow next December meeting? Do you like to, would you like me to speak with them next to them before?
I think, I think what we can, just my opinion, is after you speak with them, maybe put a small presentation of your, your conversation with, with them, and if you present it.
I could do that for December. I will also look into what other around us, can I have some more options besides my school, besides Ridgewood?
Right.
This is me and Richard at Noria.
No. Uh, I know, so we have a member of the Norwich Police Department that walks through. He also walks through at Noria. And then Union Ridge has someone from Harvard. And I did find out exactly, got a number, he says he's one hour at Lee, one hour at Giles. I think he spends a little bit longer at Giles, because he does spend usually the lunch hour, eighth grade summer or eighth grade lunchtime at Giles.
And obviously.
What's going on?
The cost, right, it's, it's, we, even though it's, they're not, not the most important, but it's important. So to understand that, you know, it's whatever the school day is, there's, you know, spring breaks, there's Christmas breaks, there's summer breaks. Is it an hourly thing? Is it, you know, is it a set cost to be here, you know, is that include events that happen at the school? I don't know, just the whole picture of what it means and the hours and so. I would, if it ever goes down that route, I would also see Chief Goss, if it's possible to have the same person, right? The good relationship with the kids and passing seeing the same person, the comfort of seeing the same person. Is that something that, if we go down that route, that they can offer, is they can say, well, oh, the schedule needs to change every?
No, that's actually, it's an important part of it, and it is the same person. And we do have the opportunity to interview the person and ask the person.
Yeah.
Because part of, of the program when you have an SRO officer is that relationship building. Um, so that we are able to build that, the relationship with the students, with the officer, so that if the student ever does need to reach out for personal help or, you know, an officer needs to go to a house, that they have that relationship.
Yeah.
We do a little bit of that with Giles and the SRO at Ridgewood, but certainly not, you know, usually only when something's going on negatively.
Right.
That we start building that relationship. Um, but you definitely have a, it's an intergovernmental agreement between you and the police department. And then you do interview underarm, you, you know, pick someone that you feel comfortable with, you want to work with.
To my understanding, it will be a police, a Norwich police officer?
Correct.
Okay.
It'd be a Norwich police officer.
And then, one, a little, one step further, when you go to the financial piece of it, what's it going to cost? You don't have to be extremely detailed about, about where would that come from our budget, what does that, what would we might have to sacrifice? Um, what are some plans that we might have that might slow the process down a bit? Does it, you know, just kind of where's it going to come from the budget, what, how does it affect it? It's obviously something we give budget for, and it's not a children right now, we have to fix it, and we're good. It's going to be ongoing, add to our budget. And, you know, what does that look like five years from now? Is it typically a two percent increase, three percent, because you can, the value of, no, it's a salary, right? So that's going to go up over the course, is that, you know, you know, a five-year forecast of what that can look like over, you know? That's, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they are in your contract, but.
Right, right.
We're all talking about research. We're talking about research, not just for the viewing public at home. Well, we're talking about all the research we'll have to do to fully consider what it would take, if we can, to take this out.
Right. Yeah, at the end, at the end, it's just more laying it all out there so that us and the community can see what it takes, right?
So you have to be informed before you make a decision.
Sure.
I will look up for you any summer.
Do you want us to?
I have something small. I was at Giles last week helping out with the book fair, and I noticed that the parking, um, the school parking, that's over against the fences. Our leader just allowed to park there and keep their cars there for days at a time.
Yeah, that's not our car. That's actually the village's car.
Oh, really?
It's a parking lot, yeah.
So yeah, they are. Can we ask the village to make that school parking? We have gone, I think, fourth, no, but I'm starting a new conversation with the, they're taking out a lot of.
Who plows that in the winter?
So that is the village's responsibility to plow that. I'm sure that we do help that out.
Yeah.
But I can have conversation with me or they.
Yeah, I mean, if it's during, you know, certain time, you know, where the school's open or, you know, no parking, so whatever.
It's, it's actually, yeah, impossible to plow that for, because there's always cars.
There's much more.
People have their cars there parked for days.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
The residents park there.
Yeah.
It's not our property at all. It's strange and kind of, so we're unable to control that. Now, our lot we can control, but here they.
So where do the teachers park at Giles?
So they do park in front, on the side, I call them, so on Oriole on the side. They also can park both of the churches that are at the corner, but you can park over there as well. Really, parking at Giles, and Coach Vieki could probably speak better to this, usually isn't an issue. It's Lee that has the parking.
Tuesdays are, because they shut down Oriole on the one side for street cleaning.
But typically, it's not an issue, parking for the teacher. Lee is, is that part of the area, probably? Especially once he's in the direction of Lee with the street cleaning that goes on on Lee Lane.
You know, brushless snow plowing are district, it's, it's, the department, knowing that they have to open up spaces for the teachers and, and wanting to plow. A lot of the touchdown, or, well, touchdown could exist because so many residents, fire. So probably, during the winter, there are bad snows, so, I'm being unable to plow, it kind of, probably complicates things for some of the teacher parks. I mean, I'm sure Derek and staff can find ways to get in there, remove snow as best they can, but.
Yeah, and Colin, it's usually pretty open. They can run the plowers through there and that usually can clear everything up. But when you have a car and then you have a spot and then maybe a car and then another truck, that's, that's weird. I mean, you can't just run your, your big plow through there, you have to.
Couldn't we ask, even if they can't make it, couldn't we ask, when there's a sort of, like, snow, cars can't come there?
That's good.
I mean.
We, we can ask.
Village.
Yeah.
I mean, at some point, I would see plenty too, because if they're hell parking and parents have to park further and you're trying to, you know, you're crossing the street.
Students do.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, students are coming, yeah.
Yeah, we do, don't have as many parents parking at Giles, much, Giles is much more of the drop-off lane, but, but they do, you know? But not anywhere near as how much they park it, like, because of the age of the students. The age of just dropping off the Giles. I, I will look into it. I know that has been an issue in the past, I would have involved in it firsthand, but, I mean, we'll discuss that.
Uh, anyone else have anything to say, comments? Okay, I would like to motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, placement of individual students in special education programs, and other matters related to individual students. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives for deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more of the classes of employees. And review of closed session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Amanda, Maria.
And Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mr. Barard?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, we will go to closed session, I know we're not, we're just, if they're nine. We need a roll call? Okay, personnel, personnel action items, employment, consider motion to approve Katrina Taylor, District Special and Air Professor. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Amanda, Maria. Roll call, please.
Um, Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Barard?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes. The motion passes. And now for board meeting reflection. All completed. Need a motion to adjourn this meeting? And, okay, Benny?
Second.
Amanda? And a roll call.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
And Mr. Barard?
Yes.
And Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.